Okay, tonight, or today, we're here to welcome you to the Douglas City Council Forum. We're the Watkins, firm believers in the community, in the forming of the community. So tonight, we decided that we want to have something here to introduce a lot of the candidates to the community and try to make sure that we can reach as many people as possible. We have our candidates here, excited and ready for tonight. We welcome you here to our house, to Willa Watkins Funeral Home. And they know well that Willa Watkins is a big contributor and a big community person here in Douglasville. I'm Greg Ushram, the manager here, and now the manager, the funeral director here. And so we welcome you here. Before we start, we do a look at the housekeeping. And some of the housekeeping is the restroom is through the doors and down the hallway. We do have someone down with us issue there. We do have refreshments here. So you're welcome to go out and get the refreshments until they all go. You're here, they're here. We thank you. We also have, in attendance, candidate Shay Johnson for Ward Number Two. She's here. And we appreciate you coming out. And we also have an area in the program that Ms. Morgan will remind you that you'll have a chance to speak. We have a Solicitor General, Sonya Compton. We welcome you here. We welcome you here. We have our very own Henry Mitchell, Commissioner Henry Mitchell. The third has been here tonight. I appreciate you for coming out. So we want you to make yourself at home. We want you to be, we want it to be a very good forum tonight, very informative forum. I looked at the questions and I think some great questions. And I'm just curious to hear some of the answers to the questions myself. We also have cards in the middle of the floor here that if you have some questions or anything, if you would fill it out, so we can give you a chance to speak. So you can just put your name and stuff, and then you'll get more instructions about that. Now, we are, we have people joining us live, virtually. So we want to give them opportunity, with COVID and everything going on, social distancing and all that, what's going on, we want to give them opportunity to do comments and have comments. So if you're joining us live, you will have a chance in the comment section to put your question that you would like to ask the candidate. We will pick some random questions offline and ask the candidates at that moment we get to it. So I think we have a pretty good lineup tonight. And thank you again for coming out. And we appreciate you. And now to our candidates. We have Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Berg-Danley. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Yes. And we have Pastor John Rogers here tonight for Ward Three Post Two candidate. And then we have Pastor Charles Lawler, candidate for Ward Three Post Two. We welcome you here tonight, sir. I'm gonna turn it over now to Ms. Ruth Morgan. She's a, she's a servant. She, she goes when you call her. So we appreciate you, Ms. Ruth, for coming out tonight. And she's gonna do a wonderful job. I could just, I'm waiting to see it.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, I'm, Greg has gone over some of the housekeeping. So now I'm going to let you know that what's gonna happen tonight. Each candidate...
Ms. Morgan, I'm DeVice Ray Caldwell, a Douglas County school member. I did want to also say that every candidate was invited. However, some of them had prior engagements. One of them is out of town. So I just wanted to state that everyone was invited and we did not exclude anyone.
Okay. Very good, okay. Each candidate will be given two minutes to answer each question. They will also be given 30 seconds to rebuttal another candidate's response. After each question of rebuttal, the timer will be signaled, the end of each response. Okay? Now, the people who are streaming, they will be able to ask questions. So Mr. Caldwell will be taking care of that. So please feel free to do that. If anyone here would have questions, please get your index cards and go ahead and fill them out, so we will have those when we are ready. Okay? If we are ready, panel, okay. Your first question. Tell us why you feel that you are the best candidate to be elected for Douglasville City Council. Dr. Berg-Danley?
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Why do I believe that I am the best candidate for Ward Three Post One? Very simple. If you look at my sign behind me, is the acronym CARE. And I am a very caring individual. I'm accessible. I am responsible, and I am experienced. This is the ward that I've lived in, Ward Three. I grew up here. So I'm very experienced and very knowledgeable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Which one? It's gonna go. Okay. Okay, but now this time. Okay. Candidate Rogers.
Well, I grew up here and spent most of my life here. I love the people. And my passion for our future has been like never before. It's been like fire shut up in my bones for about 20 years, as we've worked with the youth. And in my background, in the business side of me, in corporate, learning how to manage, how to budget, how to plan, not to come to the table with a problem, but with solutions. Our community is so diverse at this point in time, our Latino community. Every part of our community needs to be at its pinnacle point. And the objective that I will have is that we work together, all of the candidates and all of the people that are involved, to make Douglas County and make Ward Three Post Two a better place.
No.
I thought that was the shut off. We've been teaching wisdom, wealth, and wellness for a long time to our youth, to our future. And people need to know that they deserve a better life, even if they don't know that they deserve it. There's no wrong in doing right. It's, it's not about the servant, it's about the people. And that's why I feel like I would be a good spokesperson for Ward Three Post Two.
Thank you. Pastor Lawler?
Yes, thank you so much. When I get asked that question, which I have often, why do I feel like I'm the best candidate? For me, best candidate leads in the best servant, servant leadership. Why would I believe I'm the best servant leader for this ward and this post? And for me, it boils down to what I believe, the resources I bring to the table. Not just pastoring in this area and this community, right down the street from here for 17 years, not just 20 years in the Marine Corps, six deployments, three combat. And not just business, 20 years in logistics, leadership and logistics business, currently Director, Senior Operational Director for Amazon. And not just the fact that I've led and caring about my community, developing the 100 Black Men of Douglasville, as a founding, not just member, president, but initiator of that effort. And as we mentor young men even today, working with Youth Against Violence and Chief Sparks. And honestly, not just the fact that I've led in the NAACP, as a state leader here in the state of Georgia, as the President of the Youth and College Division for the State of Georgia, NAACP as President. But most importantly, because I'm a father of four daughters, oldest one 27, my youngest baby's 24, I'm with a 25 and 26-year-old in between. That should tell everyone I can listen really well. And then I'm really good at serving, and my grandson. I, I believe I can lead because I'm in touch with so many areas of our community. And for us to have fiscal responsibility and a vision for where we want Douglasville to go, not just fiscally, but also industrially and communally, socially, to build and develop those livable, playable, workable communities in this pivotal time of Douglasville's history, I believe I can be the best servant leader for this ward and post.
Thank you. I came, got a little ahead of myself for just a moment there. Would any of the candidates just like to tell us a little bit more about yourselves before we go any further? Dr. Berg-Danley? Okay, very good, man. Yes, sir?
I am the CEO and founder of The Refuge Atlanta, Inc., where we work with young men eight to 18. We teach wisdom, wealth, and wellness, life skills. We've been doing this for the past eight years. The second part of our program of The Refuge is 18 to 28, where we teach entrepreneurship. And in my background, we've always worked off a critical path. We've always set our goals, and I'm a goal setter, and we meet our goals. We put something down and we mark ourselves as we reach the final pinnacle of the point that we said we were going to be at, we will be there when we said we will be there. We're not making excuses. And this thing, where it pertains to teaching and working with one another, the greatest communication skill we have is our listening ability. You know, God knew we need to listen more because He gave us two ears and one mouth, and we need to use them in proportion. And as we see us going forward, I grew up in this community. I've watched the growth at a snail pace in our community. And I am ready to be a forerunner for our community. And, and we'll not take no for an answer. We'll not take no for an answer, that we, the people, come together and we make a decision, it's going to happen. Or any two, three come together and agree upon something. And I know my constituent, that if I'm in there with them, we will agree. And we will push for the things that this community's called for for 48 years. The only thing that we've seen in 48 years is a liquor store and a fire station. The roads are in shambles around here. And that's all I want to say about who I am, where I'm from. I grew up on Huey Road, I live off Malone Road, and pretty much everybody who's been here any at time knows what we do. And we provide a lot of housing, we feed the homeless, we house the homeless, we work with the Sheriff's Department, we work with Helping Hands, we work with Bread of Life Ministries, broader areas of trying to bring everybody up. That's what we've been doing. We've been servants this whole time.
Thank you. Okay. Pastor Lawler, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
All I'll add is I come with P&amp;L experience. That includes managing a $1.5 billion budget. When it comes to execution, know-how, and getting things done, and holding contractors accountable, and running the business of not just running the business of corporations, but also in regards to municipalities, I believe I would bring part of my experience to the table to help, again, at a very pivotal time of Douglasville's, Douglasville's growth and our direction here in our city. I've already named so many other things that I've done. I think that that's good enough. Thank you.
Dr. Berg-Danley?
Well, I am, I am a wife and a mother. I'm a grandmother, and there is nothing like grandchildren. I love them. So I grew up here in, in Douglasville. And one reason why I decided to run for office, actually, to be honest, I kid Commissioner Mitchell, he's in the audience, and I always say this, they threatened me, literally. But there were the older generation, that some of them are not here anymore. But I decided to run, and I've shared this story several times. My mom is here, Ms. Whitaker, my husband is here as well. But we live very close to this area. And when I was younger, in the fourth grade, our house burned. It burned to the ground. I remember as if it happened yesterday. We were at choir rehearsal, just right over, actually, this, this, we were here. This, this building, Funeral Home, used to be Golden United Methodist, and this is the, where we were here. And so we lived, my mom still lives in the house where I grew up. And there was not a fire station on 92. And there was no accessibility to get around the tracks, across the tracks, if there was a train. I mean, we knew how, we timed, I mean, now I do, I was fourth grade then, but you knew what time you needed to leave before the train would stop. Otherwise, you would not get across. So I remember as a fourth grader, our house burned. It was, the weather was really bad, and the lightning struck a fan that was in the window, and the house caught on fire. So I remember as a child, losing everything. The only thing that I had left was the clothes that, that I had on. So that was very devastating, very, very traumatic. And not having a fire station at that time, if there had been a fire station on this side of town, our house possibly could have been saved. So I am a true advocate for all people. I believe in doing right by people and listening. And there's, there's a lot of change that has gone on in this area. The great thing about Ward Three is that we have a lot of history here. I know we only have two minutes, but we have the first African-American school, Hutchinson High, which is just across the highway, and then also Stewart Middle School. So it is my desire to make sure that we remember where we've been, where we are, and where we're going.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay. Okay. How have you been active in the Douglasville community prior to your qualifying for office? We'll start with Elaine. Dr. Berg-Danley, please.
Thank you. Prior to being elected in 2008, on into 2009, so I finished the seat of Commissioner Mitchell, is by trade, I have a bachelor's degree in community service and development. I have a master's, MBA in business, and I have a doctorate in organizational leadership with a minor in economics. Prior to that, I, I have been a childcare director for a nonprofit, so I have experience working with children. I still mentor. So I did elementary, not elementary, but pre-K and the younger grades. And I said, I'd never do high school. Guess what? I am doing high school right now, and I actually love high school. If you get my age, picture looks kinda different, hair is done. But I am a grant writer by trade and study economics. So that is children and families is basically what I've done over time and still do that.
Thank you. Okay, Pastor Lawler?
Yes, I started working with Youth Against Violence here with Chief Sparks' goodness three and a half, four years ago. Just after that, I made the decision to ask our great mayor what she felt like would be a need for our city, for our community. And she wanted a mentoring program for young men. I had been a member of the 100 Black Men of Prince George's County, Maryland, and I'd worked with the 100 in Alexandria, Virginia. So I made a few phone calls, I met up with a young man named Todd Ireland. We made a decision, we're gonna start the 100 Black Men of Douglasville right here. We did just that. And been mentoring young men since then. We've now covered three schools. And I personally have three mentees that I continue to follow up with and that I continue to work with, and their families. I've been pastoring Trinity Christian Center, which is less than .4 miles from here, .4 miles from here, for 17 years. I would love for you all to come and join us this Sunday, 10:00 AM. We end at 11:00 AM. Feel free to stop by and say hi. And working with members of the Douglasville Village, as well as others that are in the immediate area on Malone Street of our church. So I've been heavily involved in this community for over 15 years.
Yes, ma'am.
I came back to Douglasville. I managed the state of Florida, Puerto Rico for Fortune 500 Corporation. I signed a deal where I took care of that for eight years. I came back in 2013. That's where we opened up The Refuge Atlanta, Inc. for the young men. And we begin to teach them wisdom, wealth, and wellness. We begin to teach them how to communicate. From there, we saw that there was a need, that these young men didn't have a skillset. So we started the next program with teaching them trades, vocational programs, electrical, everything as simple as pressure washing, small engines, arcs and crabs. From there, we went and started the Widow and Widower Program. In 2020, we did four widow programs and eight widower programs. And what that consists of, where people live in subdivisions here on the north side, and they were being fined because they weren't able to fix their driveways. We jacked out their driveway through our foundation, repoured the concrete, jacked their homes up, just helping those that couldn't help themselves. And then for the widowers, we, somebody had broke into their home while they were gone, stole all the wire out from underneath their house and all, everything. So we went and refurnished that whole house from the electrical, $10,000 worth of electricals and plumbing. And then working with the kids across the board, young people. And as a pastor at Cowbury Church of God, right here, one mile west of here, I've been pastoring out there now for about five years. And I just feel that trying to reach our community, again, teaching, communicating, listening, and moving, not just talking about it, but being also a doer of the word, and doer of the work, and not talk about it, but get on it. And that's, that's how I feel about where I'm at with our community and developing our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, let me just remind the other candidates, if there's anything in a rebuttal that you'd like to have, you do have two minutes to do that.
I do have one.
Okay.
Is that a code for us? I'm just wondering.
That is.
Thank you. It took me a second.
Me too. Okay. Okay. The Douglasville citizens have raised concerns regarding park safety. Given the current shortage in park security, if elected, what will you do to ensure safety of the Douglasville citizens and that they are at the forefront of your decision-making? Pastor Lawler, would you like to start?
Thank you. I want, I want to be specific with, first of all, which parks, and second of all, which specific times and areas. And I want to partnership with both the communities, where these tragedies are happening, along with our Sheriff's Department and possibly, of course, our Police Department. I would want to call a town hall that at least enabled us to have one of each of those representatives to speak to the affected community, to find out what types of things are happening. And let's see if we can find the root cause. Is it social disparity? Is it an issue where it's just outside in from folks traveling through our city, from one city to the next? We need to get the root cause and find out the foundation of it. Then once we do that, if it is a matter of getting more resources, then we've gotta find them. I believe in zero-based budgeting. I think there's a lot of waste in any budget. And I'm not picking on the city of Douglasville. You, I could, I could come to any of yours' house and look at your budget and find waste in it. It's my business, what I do. One too many staples you might have bought, maybe you spent too much on Merlot, I don't know. But we can find a way to get to the point and the root of the problem, and then find a solution that's all-encompassing for our, for the community. And by the way, Merlot is my favorite wine, for those who didn't get that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Pastor Rogers?
At the present moment, we don't have park security. We don't have running water in bathrooms at our park, Jesse Davis, at this present time. They're telling me the parks are ordered, but this has been an ongoing problem. They don't have security except for Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And the rest of the week, we're all on our own. We have no cameras. If I was to be elected, first of all, we'd set and make sure that we, first of all, had the budget for security there. We need 24-hour security at our parks. The next thing is we need a camera system, just as they have at all the other parks here in the city of Douglasville. We would have, with the Sheriff's Department and with the city, we would have to come together, that they patrol this thing, and they're held accountable to their patrol times, that they would take care of our parks and our recreation, our kids. The next thing I would do, the public safety of our parks, and, and the mental health of the people at our parks. We need to have some prob, some ways to help the mental ill here that are coming to our parks, that are affecting the other people that are trying to use our parks. I use the park on a regular basis at Jesse Davis. And I, you know, we see a lot of things that we can improve on. And I, if I'm elected to that, I look forward to a pedestrian bridge for our children to cross 10 lanes of traffic that was never thought of. They thought more of us than not to build a bridge. Over 10 lanes of traffic, I can hardly get across it before the light turns, much less a child trying to go to school or go to the park. They haven't had any forethought for us. It's time for somebody to think for us over here and come together as a group and say, hey, this is enough, it's enough. Let's spend some money over here, and let's make this right.
Thank you. Pastor Berg-Danley?
Yes, ma'am. Your question is relating to safety in the parks. So there are several parks in the city of Douglasville. And I will start specifically with the parks that are in this ward. There's Ruling Working Park, that is currently under renovation, it's in a neighborhood, a small passive park. And then we have Jesse Davis Park, which is the largest park here in Ward, in this ward, in Ward Three. And then we also have the Mill Village Park, that was just renovated. And we also have our golf course, which for some is not a park that children may play in with playgrounds, but it is considered under our Park and Recreation Department. And we have Fallow Field, which is basically for soccer. So let's just talk a little bit about safety. When, we've always had security. And what I mean by security, I'm talking of two different types. We have security officers that are not certified police officers. They are there each park. So as far as the arrest, they can hold someone, but they're not certified to put someone in the car and take them to jail, book them in, and things like, that our certified police officers have the ability to do. So as it relates to safety, let me speak specifically about Jesse Davis, because my, to my left, Pastor Rogers stated that there was no running water at Jesse Davis, and that is not true. There's two pavilions, there's a pavilion that is on the, in the middle of the park, that the restrooms currently are not operable. So the restrooms are not operable, so obviously, there's no running water. GDOT, when they were building construction, hit a line that caused, was that two minutes? Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You have a chance to, you know, you can, that's fine. Okay. Very good. Okay, sir?
I started. But I'll add.
Nope.
I am a novice. This is my first time.
You're doing just fine.
As I said, please be patient with me. Okay. The next question.
Ma'am, Hawthorne Plaza is part of the park up there, and it does have bathrooms, and it does have running water up there. But it's not, I mean, you gotta walk a long distance to get to the, you gotta walk 200 yards at least, 300 yards, to get to any running water, any restrooms to be used. And the older I get, the closer the restroom is, the better I feel. Thank you.
I can understand that. Okay. There is a growing concern among citizens regarding adequate communication. How will you ensure that citizens are better aware of what is happening in their specific ward? Dr. Berg-Danley?
Yes, ma'am. Well, you know, we have different ways that we communicate and different ways that we learn. All of us do. I'm a visual learner, so I like to read traditional with the notebooks. How we currently communicate right now, and I will continue doing this, is through social media, and also through text, by phone, and then by town hall meetings. One thing that my colleague and Commissioner Mitchell does is, in the county, he has a coffee cart conversation once a month. So he does that once a month. I make myself accessible to our citizens all the time. And my husband says, sometimes you need to turn the phone off and stop talking. That is just my passion. So I am doing better. But as far as social media... So I am doing better, but as far as social media, and just being accessible in whatever works best for each resident, it's different for each person. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Pastor Lola?
Every elected official ought to have specific and timed town halls that they do on a consistent basis with the constituency that they represent. And it should be a non-negotiable, and constituents should want that. We should absolutely use social media and its impact, because some folks aren't just going to make it to your town hall, but they can watch you via social media, on their phones. We do it with worship services, we do it with concerts, we can do it with those as well. When it becomes consistent, people will know to tune in and look for it. But then also, there's partnerships with public television, and we could at least have conversations that will allow maybe public television, as it is networked here in Douglasville, some of those same town halls might be captured, we might be able to enter into a partnership where it can be captured on television. But the bottom line, my bottom line is, as elected official, if I'm blessed to and honored enough to serve you, I will make sure that we have consistent, whether monthly or quarterly, maybe even weekly, depending on the issue that's in front of us, town halls. But you've got to do your part and show up. You've got to do your part and, and login on social media. You've got to do your part, stop being a ghost when it comes to town hall meetings, but the loudest one arguing about something that you know nothing about. And that is a problem I've seen in so many areas. So we got to connect both those two dots.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The city of Douglasville has a master plan. I'm sorry.
That's okay. You do it. I knew they was doing.
Go right ahead, sir.
First of all, I want to say thank you for everybody coming out here. And this wonderful lady to my right, that's always answered the phone calls and always been there for the North and Horizon community. And I'm thankful that we can come together and use all types of medias, all types of media, through the paper, all the type of media through social media, whether we use, and town hall meetings quarterly, or we call them roundtable meetings. But the people that are in the neighborhood, it's like this, my father had told me, he said, "Don't say nothing to me unless you're willing to get out there and be part of it and make a change." So we need to be together as women, come out, communicate with one another, listen to one another in the town hall meeting, listen to one another on social media, pick up your phone and listen to people when they call you, and just don't cut your phone off. And, and be accessible, be available, readily available, because you never know when that emergency will hit where you need it.
Thank you. Okay. The city of Douglasville has a master plan that consists of five-year and 10-year plans for redevelopment in the New Horizon community. Give us an example of how you would ensure citizens are abreast to what is to come. Dr. Vern Daly?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it's very important that each individual know how to access resources. And if they don't know how to access the resources, then they don't, they don't know. So just making sure that they know where to get the information, whether it be through a phone call, or again, through social media, but to access the resources. Currently, our comprehensive plan is on the website, however, it's also printable. And it's, and it's to the point now where you can get a text, and for those of you that are very text savvy, then you can flip it right there. So just making sure that the residents have access and they're knowledgeable about where to find it.
Very good. Pastor Rogers?
Well, everything is on the website, and it's very accessible if we are, can get on the computer. The city of Douglasville has put out different reports, just like this, it's on paper. You've got to take time to do your research. So the information is here about our five-year plan, our 10-year plan, the 100-year plan. But what I like about plans, plans change. Plans change according to the needs of the people. And so what's on the five-year plan and what's on the 10-year plan, we need to revisit it according to what the people are looking for today and today's technology that we have to do things differently. We're in a high-speed society, and there's some things that need to be held accountable to, on getting the information out. But right now, I think the information that people are getting is, is great. I think they've done a good job. Just people have to do their homework.
Very good. Pastor?
Yes, I'm aligned with Councilwoman Danley 100% when it comes to this question, but, and not but, and I want to add, that's where it comes back to having consistent town halls and a consistent medium in which we communicate to our constituents. Love the idea of the text idea, really do, but that assumes that everyone has a cell phone. Love the idea of, of finding the web, but that assumes everyone has a computer. So there are other things we have to do, even if it's posting, specifically in Ward Three, that we can do in partnership, again, with the city, to make sure that when something is changing in that five-year plan or 10-year plan, when something is being adjusted and it's going to directly impact those citizens, they can see it while they're walking, see it on the way to school, see it at the grocery store, so it's visual, then they can find out about it. If you maintain, however, those consistent, weekly, monthly, quarterly meetings, you can bring it up and capture it that way as well. I just want to make sure I suggest, we have to consider every medium possible, because not everyone has a cell phone.
Okay, we're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered. So please, I'm sorry, but please, get the cards, let's, let's hold it feet to the fire and see what they're going to say, what you want them to say. So, five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to get ready to take a five-minute break. Now, during this break, I do encourage you, get an index card and ask the questions that you want answered.
One thing I do want to say to the people there is I believe everybody here understands how important local elections are. You know, a lot of people get so caught up in the presidential election and the state elections and all that, but these are the people that makes the decision for our community. There have been times I had to call on councilwoman to take care of some things or look at some things or even inform us, and she did keep us very informed of this road closing right here, which affects the business. You know, we need to know that. So what I want people to know that when you vote your candidate in, make sure that, you know, you think about the communications, because I did hear something about the communications, and think about who's going to keep you informed of what's going on. And I guarantee you, the president is not going to call you. But I can tell you this, there was times I didn't know what was going to happen in front of the funeral home and stuff like that. I got a text message. So we were talking about communications and stuff like that, very much aware before it actually took place, because everybody wanted as much traffic and be visible to people, but then we knew it was coming. So we knew how to adjust with some things like that. So communications and different things and different mediums out there. So we want the people to know that on November the 2nd, you need not to stay at home. We have so many people that stay at home during the city elections, they feel like that don't matter. It don't matter until they get in some kind of jam or some kind of fix, and then they call their local officials, because you can't call Biden. You can't call the president. You know, you can't call who you need to call, but you can call your local officials here and candidates or whatever, and they can make some things move for you. So it is very important that everybody get out and vote. And we always tell them, tell you something, we have been such a part of the community, that we tell people, they call us and need a ride. We'll come pick you up in our own personal cars. We'll pick you up on the limo if that's what you want. Mr. Watkins has provided this for the last few years, and believe it or not, we get very few calls. We get very few calls, but we're trying to make sure that you don't have no excuse and get into the polls. So if you call us that morning and say, "We need a ride," we're going to get you a ride. We're going to get you a ride. We've been doing this for the last two or three years. Willie Watkins has endorsed this on all our locations, and we will get you a ride to the polls. So we want you to know it's very important that you call us. We don't want no excuse that you couldn't get there. It's November the 2nd, go vote. Vote, vote, vote. We support that. At this time, we're going to start back up in just a moment, but we're going to ask, and then I'm going to come back with one other thing. We're going to ask that candidate Shay Johnson, if you would come. We give you three minutes or four minutes, what you need. You want to come, which way you want to go?
Good evening, everyone. I am Shay Johnson, candidate for Ward Two Post One in this municipal election. The reason that I will be the best candidate for the next seat of councilwoman in Ward Two is that I am the person that's going to be ready for safer neighborhoods. If you need lines in your neighborhood because everyone's crossing over, then call me, and I'll make sure that that's placed on the agenda. Also, making sure that liquor stores are limited and warehouses are limited in our district. We are mostly residential in Ward Two, so I want to make sure that we limit those applications as well in our area. And also, want to make sure that I'm accessible, listen to concerns, and then take action. So for our community action today, vote for Shay. Vote Shay Johnson.
And I do understand the first part, we had some, just getting the feel of what's going on. So what we want to do, we want to revisit some things just for a moment or two. We want to give Councilwoman LaShawn Verdanley a chance to come back and finish what she was talking about. We want Pastor Rogers, if you have something else that you would like to add, and Pastor, we would like for you to come back. And so what we're going to do is give them three minutes each to speak about anything that we have talked about prior to, that maybe you felt you was rushed, didn't have time, or whatever. So we're going to come back and revisit that, because we want to be very fair, and we want the community to get a precise picture of who represented them. So at this time, we'll start with Councilwoman Danley at this moment.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Uchery. That's, I really appreciate it. I would like to finish what I was speaking about in regards to safety. So safety is very important in our community. And getting back to the park, it was, I did not, and I encourage and I challenge each one of you to go online and look at my voting record. Look at the voting record. And there are some flyers here that will show you just a snippet of how I voted, but I encourage not just to look at my voting record, but research each candidate. But to get back to safety, I did not vote to eliminate the security officers at Jesse Davis Park. Did not. So during COVID, we've always had security at the parks, not 24 hours, because our parks are open from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And when I say not 24 hours, I mean the non-certified police officers. We have ward patrols that patrol our parks. When COVID hit, the city of Douglasville, like other municipalities, had to make a decision of do we keep staff, or do we have to pull back on contractual services? And that was one. Even during that time, safety is very important. So I did not vote to get rid of security at the park. I have at the parks. So we have had a very strong conversation about that with our, with the city manager. In fact, just yesterday, I spoke with her. And if we have to amend the budget, we listened to the residents about things that are happening in our parks, and we need to deal with it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was answered. And as relates to the running water at Jesse Davis, again, Pastor Rogers, he corrected that. The pavilion restaurants are not in service at this time. There's parks that's, and it doesn't make an excuse of why, but things break. And as far as the security, currently in this area, in that, in Jesse Davis, you cannot run fiber in the area. It has something to do with AT&amp;T and Comcast, and it's not just the park, but also there's some areas in the city of Douglasville that you can't run fiber. So there are some things that we are putting in place to be able to do that, but that is not something that just happens overnight. As it relates to cameras in the park, there's no excuse why there should not be either a portable camera or cameras that are placed in. So that is not, that was not my priority, and it's not going to be. To take away safety for our residents is not acceptable. Thank you.
Pastor Rogers? Actually, I did have a comment. I want to thank you all for coming out and being part of this. And thank you so much for inviting me. It's a bit sentimental for me to be here. This funeral home was part of my father's homegoing, so they played a role in helping my father transition. I'm grateful for that. I thank you for that, and it means a lot to me. I also want to thank, and say this, not just because she's here, but because he's here, but because I've tried them both. Both Commissioner Mitchell and Councilwoman Danley actually do return calls. They really do. And they're very present. I'm not trying to get them reelected. I'm just trying to throw it out there. And if you're really nice to the commissioner, he'll buy you steak dinner, and it's really good. Really, really good. But again, seriously, thank you all so much for being a part of this. I'm hungry too. That's why I threw it out. I'm hoping that the whole smiles, you know what? You want one now? Yes, yes, yes. Yes. Earlier, I forgot to mention, I graduated from Beulah Heights University with a bachelor's in the Arts of Religious Studies. I got my master's degree in Augusta from Southern Bible Institute, and it's Augusta, South Carolina. And just studying the Word and studying the law and understanding how we treat people. We meet, you can't help somebody unless they need help. You can't help somebody unless they need help. And in doing so, it has taught me how to be more compassionate and compassionate for people, not just in all people, not if their color has nothing to do with it. I've been married 35 years, to be blessed to have this marriage for 35 years, to a young lady I met at Stewart Middle School. And, you know, I was blessed to grow up with her too. And she does things for her cause. I just wanted to say that if there is an opportunity that I get to sit on this city council, I will do all that I can. And I know that there's no wrong in doing right. Mean what you say and say what you mean. And hold me to it if I'm there. You know, I'm human. I fall too. But I'm here to stand back up, and I want to stand up for what's right. And we need our rights to be stood up for. We need some representation for our taxation. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We're going to take some questions now. We have a serious issue with crossing the tracks as walkers. How do you plan to increase the walkability to downtown and Mill Grove Park? Do you would like to start?
I have spoke with council lady about this same issue, where I have elderly residents that live on many of my properties. And I'm sure that she has went to the railroad and has spoken on our behalf, and we will have to get the state involved to get these pedestrian crossings that we need, and they are desperately needed. Not just one. I would say five are needed between west and east Strickland for our walkers, our community to get across here. And whatever the pursuit may be, we'd have to do the research on it. But we will have to come together and use state and federal, everybody we can, to get what we need to cross those tracks safely.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Verdanley?
Thank you. Currently, there is a Northside Initiative plan that involves connectivity. And in that plan, and you can find that on the City of Douglasville website, but in that plan is designed on how we can, and when I say we, I mean in Ward Three, how we connect from the north side over to the south side. So there is a walking, we have an advisory board that is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, and we do have a representative here in Ward Three that sits on that board. And the purpose of that board is to make sure that we encourage connectivity, whether it be by railroad, by car, or walking. To answer your question specifically about pedestrian crossing, Campbellton Street just recently closed less than six months ago. It's already in plans that Norfolk Southern will have a safe pedestrian crossing at that crosswalk. Currently, right now, Macarley Street is under construction. I was very disappointed when Mosley Street Crossing, which Pastor Rogers is speaking of, and it's further down Strickland Street on the east end, closed prematurely before it should have been. And it should have had a pedestrian crossing. Just within the next two weeks, the mayor, our city manager, and other state representatives, as well as our local reps, Commissioner Mitchell, will be meeting with the Commissioner of Transportation in regards to making sure that we have specific dates with the Georgia Department of Transportation and their partnership with their contractors, as well as Norfolk Southern, and when will these things happen? I don't, we don't have time to just meet to meet, but specific timelines, and that is what our meeting is about. Yes, ma'am?
100% in agreement with the councilwoman and some of the statements from Pastor Rogers. I want to echo that, this sentiment though, that's why it's so important who you elect in partnership with Councilwoman Danley, because follow through is so important. These things, these crosswalks, they should have been and probably have been included in the plan, probably prior to the construction of 92 to where we are now. But if given the opportunity, contractors are really good at leaving things out that they should have done, and if we don't hold them accountable, if we don't know it, it's a letter of the law of the plan, which is something I want to get my hands and eyes and heart deeply involved in, and use the phone and the power of the position. Because the power of the position as a city councilman, complete your voice. It's your voice that makes it powerful. We make those calls, and we are consistent in making those calls. They cannot turn their backs on them, make the calls, make them answer the calls, and ensure that we're looking at municipality, county, state partnerships all the way down the road to make sure it actually happens. So we're sure it's in the plan. She just outlined, and I believe it's there, and if more could have been there, I'm sure that the commissioner, councilwoman, and our mayor did all they could to make sure it was in there. But we have to follow up like anything else and be very consistent with how we follow up to make sure that those, that connectivity actually happens.
The next question. I have a great appreciation for traditionalism. However, what is your view for a progressive agenda?
Sure. That's a very good question. Just on Monday, the New Horizon Community Group had a meeting, and I believe in recognizing and giving honor, I'm not stealing anybody's words, but I'm going to borrow this from our, my constituent, Mr. John Dean. And he, that similar question was asked, and he had a very good comment, and the comment was, "We need to be able to walk and chew at the same time." And what he meant by that is that I definitely appreciate tradition. I mean, my mom is here, who I can sit at her feet, and she tells stories in regards to Dr. King when they came through the community, and that's awesome, and I want to be able to remember that. However, if you look in this room, you don't see not one teenager, or, and I don't want to offend anyone, but let's say 21. Okay? I say that to say that we have to be able to agree to disagree, that we cannot just remain in tradition. We're not in the era anymore. Tradition does not change things. So we have to be able to be multitask and reach each age, the millenniums, the traditional. But we have to be able to walk and chew. Thank you, Mr. Dean, for giving me that phrase.
An aggressive agenda, to me, means how do we quickly get to the livable, playable, workable communities on the north side that we sow richly deserve? How do we get the right commercial? How do we get the right real estate? How do we get the right grocery store? How do we get the right business incubators? How do we take our first generational entrepreneurs and actually provide for them opportunity beyond where they're at to grow their base? I'm all for the larger companies and the larger footprints, but so many of our, so many of our citizens have ideas, and they have concepts and things they've started and things they've developed. How do we expand those right here in Douglasville and make them a mecca of success right where we are? I was listening this morning, 1053, to the founder of a vegan food company, who quite frankly is impressive in that she just started with what she had, she grew it. She didn't realize the partnership she could have with cities, states, or counties. She just did something she believed in. A gentleman who founded Dave's Cheese Steak. So these entrepreneurs, they're here, and our young people, here's an aggressive thought, how do we take the art of videography, coding, and rap, and justify it, and legitimize it, and make it something our kids can actually turn into a cash cow and develop with Tyler Perry and T.I., and bring them out here and develop one of the first multicultural arts, entertainment, and educational centers right here in Douglasville? That's bold to me, and we can do it. We have the people. We have the opportunity, the presence. We can take the north side, because I've said this before, as the north side goes, so does all of Douglasville. I truly believe that, because the opportunity is untapped, because in some cases it has been forgotten about, as hard as we try to make to work to make it remembered. So when I think about aggressive, I honor the traditional. Do not get me wrong. We absolutely have to honor it, but we have to have vision for the future. The fact that we don't have Wi-Fi or things of that nature to help with the industrial build on this, on this side of train tracks obviously concerns me. Those are things that we can aggressively lean forward into so that we don't get left behind.
One of the main things is commercial and economic development planning, to be aggressive with it, to put the plans in action. We know things don't happen overnight, but we look at the overall of what properties we have, the landmass that we have, what we can do to better our community. And first of all, we got to stop settling. I mean, the first bridge that was built on the overpass was East Strickland. It's still not open. It was supposed to have been open in September. All the roads, it's Strickland Street. I mean, you know it. We have to really get hardcore with who's the Power to Be to get speed limit signs. You have East Strickland is a wreck on the roads. Brown Street's a wreck. Ella Street's a wreck. Huey Road's a wreck. Malone's a wreck. All these different things, they're like they are, because somehow, some way, we just settled. We have to stop settling. I mean, I stood up in front of the city council on the 4th of October, and I asked them, "Can somebody please tell me when this is going to open?" And their reply to me was, "That's too loaded of a question. Would you email it, and we'll email you back?" They emailed me back. Then they sent somebody else to talk to me, and still yet, not one thing they said that they were going to do has been done. We got to get aggressive with the Powers to Be, or we got to move them out and get somebody in who will get aggressive. And this has nothing to do with this fine lady right here. She wasn't even there that night I asked the question. But I want you to know, to be aggressive, you got to get aggressive. And you got to have a good defense, as well as a good offense, in how you're going to deal with people. You got to know our strength, and we got to know our weaknesses. We got to know what we have to stand on, that we can get things done. Thank you.
Next question. If elected, what will you do to enhance what has been done in the last five years?
I will start that. One of the things I would like to see done is better partnership on the city council. I'm not going to say that it's been horrible for the past five years, but I can see opportunity for it to be better. It's not that we don't have a plan for the city, and specifically for Ward Three, but sometimes it becomes difficult trying to fight that plan on your own when you can't get that four plus one vote that you need, three plus one vote that you need to make these things happen. So number one is partnership. Number two is communication, and better communication, specifically between the city council and our constituents. The answer is there, and we'll sit here and talk, as long as you'll let us, without that alarm going off, about all the great and grand ideas that we have to bring forward. But if I could do those two things, specifically in the first 30 to 45 days, we can take some of the concepts that are already there, and we can add to them quickly, and we can move quicker. My last point, my third point, is Highway 92 project. Lights need to work. Landscape needs to be on point. It needs to look better aesthetically so that we can be more attractive for industry and business to come into our community. I want to build those communities up, our, my community up, realizing that it will impact property rates, but at the same time, I want to empower my residents to be able to go back and say, "Listen, although it's gotten better, don't increase my property taxes or my property worth. Let somebody else carry that burden, i.e. new folks who move in, and let's imply impact fees to developers to make sure they're doing their thing right, and they're being charged for the goodness they're going to get out of real estate, so that we can continue to enjoy a better area to live in without paying additional property taxes."
And the last question that I have. What will you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The answer was so good, she was ready. I understand that.
I'm sorry, sir. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So can you please repeat the question? The last five years?
If elected, what will you do to enhance what has been done in the last five years?
So I am currently elected, and I am in this for win. So reelected. So if I am reelected, then every year, the city council, we have a retreat every year, and that is when we put our boots down, we meet with each department head, and we look at their plans. So within the next five years, looking over what we've done is to continue to meet with our city manager and each department head, looking at their goals and objectives, and making sure that we're in line and appropriate, that it's realistic, and that making sure that we're in line and appropriate, that it's realistic, and that we move forward with what needs to be done. But realistic is the number one goal, is making sure that when we set goals and strategies, that we have an action plan behind it, and that's working with each department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is the last question that we have.
Okay. How you doing?
Yes, okay. I know we all look alike. Anyway, what I would do, my first objective would be this here. The 92 project needs to be complete 100%. They have, it's called a critical path. And on those critical paths is the dates that things are made. This is to be done on this date, that is to be done on this date. And there has to be an accountability on this Highway 92 project. I mean, it's horrible. Anyway. Second thing I would like to do is make sure that there is a critical path on this. We just have approved the new venue over there for the amphitheater, and what's going to happen there, that there's a critical path, that all the plans are efficient, and all the plans are realistic, and that we can go forward for there. Other than that, I think our architectural, all the architectural things that we have that are not here needs to be here. And the trash is horrendous. I want to make sure that we're getting our trash picked up on the things that they've already got in place that we could improve on, is picking up our trash. Thank you.
And this is the last question. What will you specifically do to hold city leaders accountable toward three initiatives? Will I start? Dr. Burr, Danley?
I knew I'd go first. So what will I do to hold officials accountable? So I have to bring that down to this ward, because we have federal, state, and local. So I have to speak about what will I do as an elected official to make sure that my colleagues and I are communicating, and that we are effectively doing things as a team. And I can honestly say that with this administration, the mayor and council, we listen to the residents... That was in two minutes. But what will I do is, I am a graduate of Leadership Douglas, 1995. So learning how to not only work with my colleagues on the seat, with the mayor and council, but I have to be able to work with several different entities within the city of Douglasville and Douglas County, period. So how will I make sure is continue to communicate with my colleagues, learn how to disagree and agree, and that's okay if we have heavy heated debates, but when those are over, that we still make sure that we are team, and that we can move forward. In this ward, there are two votes, two, out of six. The mayor votes if there's a tie, so she doesn't have a vote such as the county chair. But working with my colleagues and building relationships, and just because I have an idea doesn't mean that my colleague wants the same, but strengthening the relationships that we have.
Pastor Rogers?
Over the years, we got a lot of contracts, and our contracts came out of our relationships. We always didn't have the lowest price, we didn't have the highest price, but we had relationship. In any relationship, you have to have reciprocity. If there's not give and take in that relationship, there is no relationship. It lives and dies on relationship, on who, what we have, and where we have. A house divided against itself can't stand. So we'll have to work together, we'll have to team up. And yeah, it's okay to disagree, agree to disagree. It's okay to have those heated conversations. But at the end of the day, it's nothing personal, it's for the betterment of our humanity, our community. And that's how I'd work on that. Relationships, reciprocity.
First of all, I'm a brother of the Leadership Douglasville class of 2021, and we are the best class. Just throw that out there just in case. Holding your peers accountable is the single most hardest thing that you can do effectively in business, ministry, or in politics. But I can certainly say it does boil down, that's a good word to use, to relationship. You got to be careful in forming those conversations, and being able to be agreeable even when you disagree, which is so very important. So, constituents, you have to make that decision after you do your research. Who do you want working in the city council from your ward to post that you believe can work together the best to garner those votes? Two of us out of six, that is certainly a strategic advantage, especially for us, but if her and I, or he and I, whoever and I, we're not together, we're not aligned, we just become two individual votes instead of becoming one. You have to know the landscape, but also, you have to understand what's at stake and be a student of the city, a student of the numbers, and be able, if need be, to make corrections. Because a lot of times, our peers won't be accurate. So many times, I've heard people give emotional arguments about what they think needs to be done. It drives me up the wall. A question's asked, and all they do is respond with a bunch of emotion. Politics is not about emotion, although we try to make it about emotion. It isn't. It's about dollars and cents and what is best for our residents. And the truth does come out and prevail as long as you articulate it correctly. I do believe I have the substance to be able to do that. I've proven I could do it from a military perspective, from a business perspective, from a community perspective, as well as from a spiritual, as a pastor. So I certainly bring a lot of that negotiable opportunity to the board or to bear, to make sure that we can hold each other accountable. But let me close with this. I can't hold anybody accountable if I'm not accountable myself, and for what I do. I can't hold you for being there if I'm not there. I can't hold you accountable for caring for citizens if I'm not caring for them. So I'm going to start with me.
Thank you. And this is the last one.
Ms. Morgan, can I please, can I rebuttal? Do we have a chance to rebuttal? Okay. Thank you, Pastor Law. I just wanted to make a comment, just give an example, is relationships are very important. However, as an elected official in this ward, it is my duty to advocate for what we need and listen to the residents. Let me give you an example. On our agenda, probably about two years ago, there was a business owner, and I am definitely supportive of small businesses. However, I'm very sensitive in regards to what happens in this ward. There was an item that came up on the agenda about trucks going through our park. Now, the road through the park is a city street. So the compromise with some of our council members, "Well, it's a city street. There's nothing wrong with an 18-wheeler going through the park." Yes, it is something wrong with an 18-wheeler going through the park where children and families cross the street. Are you kidding me? And I have to give an A++ to the residents in this ward, because that had passed, that trucks went through, and we were like, "No way." We went back to the mayor and council, and it was overturned. Not only was it overturned, but there was a sign put up that says, "No trucks will go through the park." And then another step is to abandon the backside of that street so that if I'm not here, and when I pass the baton, that that will not happen, period.
What are your plans for the city's SDS, lost, and MAP redirecting?
I have so many acronyms that run through my brain every day.
Okay. This is from the audience. SDS?
So the question is, you got lost, the local option sales tax, you got the SDS, and then you got the map redistricting that we just went through, the census. What are your plans? When that negotiation starts, so whomever wins this seat, starting next year, that's what we'll be dealing with. We as residents, negotiating with the county, negotiating with the city, negotiating with the state on those acronyms. That's the question.
Repeat it one more time. Repeat it one more time.
So, lost, that's your sales tax. For those of you who don't know, that's your sales tax. There's a negotiation, so every 10 years, the city and the county and the state, we all come together and negotiate how those funds will be split. The SDS is service delivery. The county has service delivery, the city has service delivery, but the county provides 90% of the city's service delivery.
For all utilities?
Not all. You guys have to have at least three of the 20 that's out there. But you guys, to be a city, you have to have those. You've got that, you're a city. But the other 90% is provided by the county. But that negotiations will start with whomever is elected the next round. And last but not least, we did the census. All of us remember we did the census. And you kind of told how many lived in your household, and you included the pets, and everybody else, the goldfish. What do you do with that? So, that means that there are more populations normally within the city because they're dense. So how would you deal with that negotiations when it comes to the city, the state, and the county? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go first. Commissioner Mitchell is so smart, because he knows that our lost negotiations is coming up next year. So he wants to get an answer ahead of time to see how we're going to do it.
What the who asked that?
So, as always, what I've done is, number one, is, this is Ward Three, you elect me to be your representative. Going to the county and as it relates to the lost, currently, right now, the city, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the county. So Commissioner Mitchell stated the county pays 90, is responsible for 90%, 90%. Well, of course, 90%, they have a lot more population in the county than you do in the city. However, we work together. Currently, the city, we pay for fire services, we also pay for animal control. So we negotiate the cost and the price. Is it a fight sometimes? Absolutely. Do I like a fight every once in a while with Commissioner Mitchell? 24/7. Because he is the district commissioner in this, he is our district commissioner. So, listening to him, negotiating, and my background is in economics. I can debate a long time, and he knows that. So standing up for this ward, not compromising, and not being intimidated, period, about what the county does in the city, it's being able to come to the table, but at the end of the day, is to do what's right by the citizens that pay taxes in the city of Douglasville. That is what I'll do, Commissioner Mitchell.
Fact-based data-driven. Not at all. Not at all. Fact-based, data-driven. I'm going to say it one more time, so we get lost in the laughter. Fact-based, data-driven. We have to look at our population, the taxes that we pay, the percentage of those taxes that we pay. Specifically, I'm going to start in Ward Three, Post Two, because per capita-wise, we're probably not just underserved financially, we're probably not compared to the rest of the city or the county. So for me to look at our local option sales tax, for me to look at our service delivery, for me to look, it's got to start with how many citizens we have on the North Side, and then back into the entire city, and then the entire county, so we can find out specifically how much fair share equates to. We'll start with fair share, and we'll take a budgetary line item to it, I'm going to look at it and break it down that way, come to what that number is, come to see how much money is costing the city in each one of those utilities, whatever those SDS are. We can go through each one of them, itemize, and we're going to come up with the best one for the North Side, which I'm going to advocate, but then I do know there'll be some negotiation, because as a mayor council, it's the entire city. But if I might throw it out there, me and LaShawn are going to have to start with the North Side and be the biggest advocate for them, get to that fact-based, data-driven decision, and then back into where we're going to go when it comes to SDS.
I concur with Pastor Lawler, it's fact-based data. And second of all, we'll have to work together. If I was chosen, and I was working with the other individual who's elected, we're going to have to get together, and we're going to have to do what's best for our community according to what we have to work with, and make sure that we're getting an equal cut of all the funds, and that we're not spending no more or no less than, we're not spending no more, and we're not receiving no less than anybody else with the funds, with what we got to work with. And I see that the revenues and expenditures, they match. I don't, you know, somewhere along the line, we also have to have a plan about where we're going to come about getting out of our debt on this ordeal. What about a plan also to add to it about us having an emergency fund for Ward Three, Post Two? These are things that, when you talk about fact, data-driven, you know, we always cut out a portion of what we have to work with in case we have a rainy day. But I agree with everything that both of these individuals have said, and I like to debate too. Thank you.
I'd like to also add a rebuttal, please. As a city resident, you know, you chose, for those of you that live in the city, and those businesses that are in the city, you're in a great place. We have businesses that want to come to the city because of what we offer in regards to incentives, opportunities. Being a city resident, you have county tax, city tax, and school board. So you better know that before I put the burden on the city residents, especially those in my ward, yeah, it's coming, Commissioner, I'm ready.
Anyone else? Thank you all very much for those questions. And I see that we have, Mr. Terry Miller has arrived. Would you like to come up and have a few words?
I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak. Welcome, everybody. I don't know if you know me or not, I'm Terry Miller, I'm the city councilman representing Ward One. This is not my ward, however, I take an active interest in anything that goes on anywhere in the city, because whether you represent Ward One, or Ward Three, or anyplace like that, you still represent the city as a whole, because you vote on things that affect everybody. And so it's very important that we all work together for the betterment of the entire city. And especially, I probably don't have to tell you, folks, this is a very important election. It's an off-year election, it's a municipal election. In my ward, for instance, you know, I've got maybe 5,000 people who live in my ward, close to that. The last contested election in my ward was won by about, with a total of 230 votes. Think about that for a second. If you're in a household with two people, you're 1% of the winning total. If you have four people in your household, you're 2%. So you have an outsized amount of power in this off-year election. This is very critical that you do participate, because folks have fought very hard and we died for that right. You disservice them, and you don't show up. Success is a matter of showing up. And so I don't have to lecture folks about that, I know you know very well about that. But I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. Good luck to all the candidates here, you're all, I know, all the guys, you're great folks, and you're in good hands here in Ward Three. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our two candidates to make their last... Our candidates to make their last final remarks.
I know, I'll go first. Ladies first, thank you. So just final remarks, I'd like to remind those of you that are here, present, and also our viewing audience that this Friday, October 29th, is the last day for early voting. And it's at the courthouse on Hospital Drive from 8 until 5. The next time that you have the opportunity to vote is on Tuesday, November 2nd. Now, things have changed since our last presidential election. So if you are expecting an absentee ballot to be mailed to your home automatically without you requesting it, it's not going to happen. So you have to do your part and go and vote. You still have until Friday to vote, but I thank our mayor, Pro Sam, for saying that. And as your elected official now, I will continue to be caring, accessible, responsible, and indeed an advocate for you. So I ask that you go out and vote on November 2nd for Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdandley, Ward Three post One. Thank you.
Again, I'm honored and grateful even for this turnout, for all that are here. Thank you so much. If you consider the numbers that Terry just gave us and just to see the size of folks that came out, the living Ward Three that are here, thank you so much. I'm not going to make the mistake of not asking you to vote for me. I want your vote. I would like to serve you, and I'd be honored to be the one that you would choose. I bring a lot of experience with me, not all political, but certainly business, military, social, communal, in my heart, and certainly for this community. I also ask that you consider the opportunity we have right now in Douglasville and Douglas County, one of the last areas of development in the metro Atlanta area. East side, for the most part, is blown out. We know what the south side is if you've ever traveled up from South Georgia coming into Atlanta, and it's starting to build up out here. But Douglas County is such a blessing and haven of opportunity, and specifically our ward, Ward Three. I want to bring livable, playable, workable communities that we deserve on a high-end scale that does the right thing, not just for us, but also for our children. I want our children to grow up in a community, which we can, that allows for them to be able to have the aesthetics, the beauty, the charm, the educational foundation, and the opportunity to dream in every area of their senses of dreaming. They don't have to be narrowed to the traditional streamlines of what it means to be great. Nothing wrong with being a doctor or lawyer or educator, but they can also do so many other, what mainstream considers untraditional. But they love to do it. They have an art to do it, whether it is coding or videography or entertainment, and we can do those types of things here in our city. Some like Little Nas X and others that are already successful, where they agree with their social lifestyle is one thing, but the fact that they are able to be able to bring success and show our children how to get there. We have a tremendous opportunity, commercial, to be able to build and bring retail into our community so we don't have to ride in DePaul and County or over on the south side to get groceries. It's a tremendous opportunity, and I want to help to lead it and bring that here to our community to the north side. So I'm Charles Lawler. I'm wanting to be your city councilman, and I would absolutely be honored to serve. Thank you.
Thanks again for everybody coming out. Thank you, Willie Watkins, for having this tonight and giving us an opportunity just before we go to vote to share our hearts, our minds, the things that I love about Douglasville is the people. Many of you probably love Douglasville for the people and the diversity. And I thank God that we're able to work and have an opportunity to work with everyone. You know, it's again about our future. It's about our kids. And I would like to continue the things that we've done at the refuge with our kids and in the arts, in the vocational skill sets that we taught, ABC apprenticeship programs, getting involved not only with the community but in our school system. Entrepreneurship, it needs to come back. We've got to bring our kids up to speed. It's time, not that they're not up to speed to a certain extent, but it's time for greater, the greater. And if you decide to elect me for Ward Three post Two, it would be an honor to serve you guys. My motto is, there's no wrong in doing right. If you've always done what you've always did, you'll always get what you've always gotten. You, the people, have to decide. Are you happy where you are and with what you've got? Because nothing changes, nothing changes, and that's real. God bless you all.
I'd like to thank the candidates so much for coming out tonight, and I'd like to leave this word with you all. Go out and vote. This room should have been packed tonight. Vote. We can make this city, this community, great if we work together. Put people in office who have the same vision, the same dreams, the same hopes for our children's futures and for our grandchildren's future, but it's important that we vote. Go to your council meetings. Become active in this community. And you'll be surprised what can happen. I think we served on the, it's only worked for about five years. I know that it can be a difference made if we as a community get out and support our elected officials. Thank you.
So thank you all for coming out. This has been a great evening. It's been very informative. If we could just give these candidates another round of applause. You guys are clearly an outstanding job. We'd also like to give a round of applause to my fellow elected officials that were here tonight as well. And lastly, if you guys didn't catch it at the beginning, I am Devitra. I'm a fellow Douglas County school board member. I represent District One. And then lastly, to the Willie Watkins funeral home, as Greg mentioned, Mr. Watkins is a pillar in the Douglas County community. He advocates tirelessly on voting, being active in the community. And so we'd like to say thank you to Greg, who celebrated and who also was a champion in making this night possible to make sure that Douglas County residents, Douglas County citizens always get the best. So thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to him with any final remarks. And then also, please give a hearty welcome, a hearty thank you to Ms. Ruth Morgan, who was an outstanding candidate. We called her. She answered yes without any reservation, so for that, we certainly thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Greg under his roof. Thank you.
We're going to end it with, go vote. Give it me a second. Go vote. Just go vote. We appreciate you, and we thank God for you. You all have a good night. Thank you so much.
And we also have plenty of refreshments, so please partake in the remaining refreshments that are here.
I'd like to give those that participated, y'all, in one picture.
Okay.